Good evening. I call this special meeting of the Stanton City Council of February 2nd, 2023 to order. Tonight, we will be doing a application interview process for five candidates. And we're planning on having 20 minutes per interview. And we're hoping that we're going to ask six questions and they're going to run approximately two minutes apiece, two to three minutes, and that should do our 18 minutes. And then we will have an opportunity to take a break if we need to before we go back to the second, to the next interview. The interviews are scheduled 30 minutes apart. So we'll try to get everybody to hold everything to two to three minutes for their reply to your question. And everyone should have the questions in front of them. And I will start out with the introduction and open. And then second question is Mark Robertson. Third question will be Michelle Edwards. Fourth question will be Brad. Fifth question will be Alice. And the sixth question will go to Amy. And then we'll thank them. And I guess that's the most important thing. We want to thank every single applicant. We were overwhelmed with the 20 different applications we received. And I'm most pleased with the enthusiasm and interest in the job. And we hope that some of these people will pursue this, apply for other boards and commissions, and hopefully run again, because this position is only going to run until the election now. Mr. Blair and I discussed this today. There isn't an exact start date for this. Well, this, the start date is determined. There isn't an end date for this period. We're going to wait until the election results are certified after the November election. So whenever that occurs, we will be able to figure out when the, the new candidate will take over. But the election results have to be certified before we can automatically put them in. So any questions, comments from council before we get this process underway?
Look forward to hearing everybody.
Right now.
So do I. And, and the main thing we want to express is our appreciation of all the applicants we got. It's been most impressive. And all the citizens' response that we've had so far have been, have been very good as well. I think we're a couple minutes early, but Ms. Beauregard, do you know if Mr. Venable's available?
Go check. Would you like to go ahead and get started?
Unless anybody has any other further questions, I think we're all here and ready to go.
Did you go over the public comment section, the rules for the public comment section just before we get started?
The statement I have here is, in a moment, I'll open up this portion of the meeting dedicated to receiving public input. Is it time that council sets aside to hear from citizens? We ask that you please give your name, your address, keep your remarks at two minutes or less. When you reach the two-minute time limit, I will let you know that your time limit has expired. We ask you to keep your comments positive. For our Zoom participants, please raise your hand now if you wish to speak. Please keep your comments to two minutes as well. Once everyone who wishes to speak has had an opportunity, I will close this public input opportunity. If you wish to speak, come to the podium. So that's all I'm reading. But we, the main thing is, we want to make sure it's a positive comments. We, we appreciate all applicants. We don't want to bash on any, any applicant.
Ready to?
Any other questions, comments? Order? Ready? Good afternoon and welcome.
Good afternoon, City Council.
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you all.
We're looking forward to this. And first off, I'm going to start the same way I start every, every interview that we have at the nominating committee. And we thank you for your interest in helping the city of Stanton. We definitely appreciate your involvement. And of course, we, we are looking forward to your comments tonight.
Okay, thank you.
For the general population, we want everybody to know that we're interviewing Mr. Kenneth Venable, most recently our school board chair. I believe, Ken, you're quite aware of all your council people. So we're on, I'll ask you a question.
Okay.
And we're asking you to keep your replies to two to three minutes and, so that we can finish this up in 20 to 30 minutes.
That means that we can't be here all night?
Yeah.
We're hoping we're not here all night.
Okay, no problem, no problem.
So I, I'm going to go first. And once again, I'm going to say thank you for applying. We have read your application. Now, could you tell us why you are interested in serving on city council this year?
Certainly. I'm very interested in serving on city council as born and raised in Stanton. And I'm blessed to come back after about 40 years in industry and dealing with a lot of things, but also to come back to my city to see what I can do to give back, not just to sit in a chair and have a name up there, but be able to do something positive for the city of Stanton. And I'm blessed over the years to have had good jobs and excellent training in various markets, big and small. And I think that my expertise in a lot of areas will be helpful to the city of Stanton at this critical time, as we look forward, we look at budgets, we look at the crunch of money, and we have to look at also the crunch of competitiveness in the city and also in the state of Virginia.
Very good.
Okay, Mr. Venable, I'm next. What is a particular skill you possess that would be the most helpful as far as your service on city council?
That's kind of hard, because I would say my particular skill, and I'm going to do it a three-pronged approach, is because I come out of corporate America, that's the way that I think, and I love it, because I think it helps us here, is that when I look at it in three points, far as a corporate thinking, budget analysis, sales and marketing. Corporate thinking is not looking at where we are right now, but looking at where the city has to go based on circumstances and business opportunities that we have to avail ourselves of. Also, on budget analysis, to be able to analyze budgets, where we've been, the pitfalls we've been through, but also projecting based on actual recorded data as we look forward. And also looking at sales and marketing, where we can increase revenue to substantiate the budget and achieve the goals that we need to achieve far as the city of Stanton.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Mr. Venable?
Yes.
How does your work experience and history help us on city council?
I think my work experience, I think when I look at it, has been very diverse, but also it helps me to look at things that we can do far as, far as city council to be innovative. I'm an out-of-the-box thinker, visionary, but also be able to bring those talents and connections to my hometown of Stanton that can help us move forward. And that is so critical in today's time, because I looked over the last probably 10, 11 years I've been here, and there's things that I think we can do, things that we can network with. And that's a key point of networking with businesses and all like that, to help us move forward as we look at everything down the road. So I'm excited about that, because all the places I've been, every door that I've been in through, I can go back through those doors today.
Mr. Venable, in what ways are you involved in different aspects of Stanton life? We had other organizations, religious participation, government involvement, things like that. And how would this involvement inform how you lead on council?
Well, I'll just take the first point. I would say as far as religious, religious, I'm a member of the Ebenezer Baptist Church. Also, I'm the, the past chairman of the Budget Committee, and also a past chairman, well, I'm present chairman of the Budget Committee, but also as the chairman of the Trustee Board, far as a church. And if you look back over the last three to four years, we put in an elevator. The budget was set up to run it on 10 years. We paid it off in four. We put a new complete roof on the church, and it's all paid for. Also, we have a line of credit. Those things weren't done before, because a lot of times they think about, you know, when you get a loan, oh, take it out for 10 to 15 years. I said, you don't do that. I said, what you're doing is you're paying a lot of interest you don't need to pay. So we worked it out so we can get all those things done. So that old church is very solid and in good shape. And it's just an expertise that you know how to help in those areas. Also, I'm now the president of the Stanton branch of NAACP. And that's, and then I look at that far as helping the needy and looking at it far as advancement for African-Americans, but also for all groups. And basics behind that is also education. Education is a key, is the key to the future life of the city and also for the United States. Also, I'm the vice chair on the board at Frontier Culture Museum. And that's very exciting to me. But also on that board are your elected officials from Richmond. So I get a chance to interface with them and sometime pick their brains. And I think that'll be very helpful, close to things that we have to do, especially when we're looking at budgets and we're looking at getting, trying to get extra money. And that makes it very exciting. And also, I'm on the board at American Shakespeare Center and dealing with culture and trying to get more of a young people to look at culture and get involved. So I think those three, when you put it together, will help me and help the city grow and have more unity in the city of Stanton.
Well, thank you, Mr. Venable. And now, Mr. Venable.
Yes.
City council members can easily dedicate 15 to 25 hours a week to duties and meetings, which can occur during the day or evening. Are you able to make this commitment?
Oh, yes, no problem at all. I thought it'd be more hours than that. And I know it's a lot of work to be done, and I'm used to that. And anything I can do to help and with the city and city council, I'm open to it 24/7.
Okay. Mr. Venable, thank you for being here. Do you have any final thoughts about a goal or a priority that you think city council should focus on?
Hmm. Let me think. You know, one thing, and this involves, I always try to say to total city, we as a Stanton, the city of Stanton, have to come together as one inclusive city, whether it's the West End, whether it's downtown, or whether it's Mary Balla University, or it's a Stanton School System, where, whether it's Union Town, whether it's Stanton Crossing, or whether it's Frontier Culture Museum, all of that is a part of Stanton. And what we have to do is make sure that we know all that involves that, all that involves tourists. And we just can't put one side and say, well, that's out there, don't worry about, no, we have to worry about all of it. And then what it does, it makes us a very inclusive, diverse city to market, to everybody that comes up and down 81 and 64.
Closing comments?
Only closing comments. I just want to do my job to give back to the city. And I'm just so thankful that I had education in Stanton. And I've been everywhere, worked in corporations and all like that. And one thing I like to tell city council and this city, everywhere I've been, and I've been successful, and because of training, they said, where are you from? And they say Stanton, Virginia. And they says, wait a minute, I know Stanton, Virginia. I've been through Stanton, Virginia. I was in Seoul, Korea. So the thing, I was in Anchorage, Alaska. I was in Hawaii. And the funny thing about it, Stanton is known, people come through Stanton. So the more that we can do is promote the city and do good things, that's a, that's a triple A plus for the city. And that's why I always tell them, I'm just so glad that I was part of this city.
Very good. Thank you so much. I appreciate talking to you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And as you know, we will be in touch.
Moving right along. Do you all, Mr. Mayor, since your next interview is until 5:00?
Correct.
Do you all like to go on break until the next interview arrives?
That'd be fine. Yeah, that's good.
These are going to go by quickly then, yes.
Cut that out.
Okay.
Yeah, I thought we were, we were getting here at 4:15. Okay, so you weren't much before me. Okay.
I'm trying to do better. No, I mean, I will do better.
We're back. Our second interview at 5 o'clock is with Mr. Terry Holmes.
Afternoon.
How are you, Terry? I don't think we need to introduce one another. We're glad to see you back in council chambers.
I thought y'all couldn't get along without me.
So I want to start this out like we start all interviews, particularly with the nominating committee, and thanking you for your willingness to serve the city of Stanton. And we, we need all the help we can get to run this wonderful city. And we definitely appreciate you after your eight and a half years coming back. We're going to go down the entire council. Everybody ask a question. Feel free to take the three minutes.
Do I need to introduce myself to anybody here? I don't know if, I mean, everybody here and up there knows me. I just didn't know about this.
I think everyone knows you. I'm looking around.
But you can introduce yourself.
If you'd like, yeah. Yeah, go ahead. I think you have time.
Well, just go ahead. I'm, I'm ready.
Okay.
All right. So like I said, thank you for your, your application. We've read your application. Could you tell us why you're interested in serving on city council?
Well, one thing is the fact that it's just an interim spot, and somebody would be replacing me in, in November. And I think that I'd be a good fit, because I just came off of council. So you wouldn't have to get me up on the budget and a lot of the things that are going on in town. So, and I'm, I've got Christmas out of the way at work, and that's always a rough time for me. And so it would be a good fit for me now. And I enjoy doing it. I mean, I just enjoy working with the city and working with all of you guys.
All right. All right. Terry, I'm next. What is your, or what is a particular skill that you possess that would be the most helpful as far as your service on city council?
Well, other than prior knowledge of being on city council, I think it's been a businessman in Stanton for 32 years. I have a staff of around 50 people. And, you know, so, and I've been through three or four downturns, a pandemic, and a few other bad time, time periods, and still survived. I've been here since before the Big Dig. So I've seen a lot of changes here in town. And, and I've been involved in a lot of those changes. And I think that I bring just a level head to, to city council.
Thank you.
Mr. Holmes, how does your work experience and history help us on city council?
Well, again, I, you know, I just come off the city council, so that's eight and a half years of, you know, so I'll be really up to date, you know, maybe there's a little bit of reading to catch up. And plus, what, like I do, it's been a business person, being part of downtown, and, and, and have lived here, you know, for 20 some years, you know, it's, 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 I bring a lot of experience from just being a, a citizen. And I know how to work with people, I know the people on the, in the city government. So it, so it would be an easy fit.
Okay, Mr. Holmes, in what other ways are you involved in different aspects of Stanton life? Things like volunteering, maybe things with church, government involvement, activism, stuff like that. And how would this involvement inform how you lead as a member of council?
Well, since I've been in business, I don't really get out and volunteer much in as far as my personal time. But I've, over the years, I've given numerous amount of money and, 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 and things from my restaurant to promote like different things going on in town, you know, like when the, when the mission caught on fire, we, we cooked, we cooked dinner for the whole crew there because they didn't have a kitchen. And so we were doing things like, we've done things like that over the years. But there's probably not a church in town that we haven't donated to or, 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 or done things for.
Thank you. So, Mr. Holmes, I know, we all know that you just finished your tenure here on city council. And one of the things that we would like to ask is that, you know, it takes time and hours and duties and meetings, and which can occur during the day or evening. So are you still able to make those commitments?
Yes, you know, especially now, you know, Christmas is a really tight time for me. And, and I'll let you know, at Christmas time, I get a bit uptight. So, but now it's not a problem. You know, I can dedicate the amount of time that's needed to, to, to make it work.
Thank you.
Hi, Terry. Do you have any final thoughts about a goal or priority that you think city council should focus on?
Well, we got to worry about the juvenile court. I mean, that's a really big deal. And we don't, we don't have a lot of money. And that's, we, you know, we just don't have a lot of buying power right now. So we've really got to get that going and, and, and do it as economically as we can. Because, you know, until we get some of our loans paid off on some of our schools and stuff, we, we don't have a lot of borrowing power. I mean, I think we can borrow maybe like 10 mil or something like that, which isn't a whole lot when you're looking at some of the things that we got on the books to do. So I think that we really need to, to work on getting that juvenile court in place.
Closing comments, Terry. Feel free.
I would just, you know, I feel like I would be a good fit for this, just because I just came off of, of, of city council. And I have no desire to run for another term. So, you know, this will give you all a year to get somebody up and running. You won't have to have a special election. And, and, and I do enjoy working on city council and have for the whole time I've been here. And, and I think I'd just be a good fit.
Well, we thank you for your time this evening. We appreciate you coming by.
All right. Well, thank you.
Good to see you again, Terry.
I even dressed up for you.
I was gonna say, you clean up well.
I was gonna wear Carolina blue.
They had a tough night last night.
Last night, they did.
Great seeing you, Terry. Thank you. Does he stop the recording?
Before the next one, or we want to just keep moving, or just give people time to tune in?
Published.
Yeah.
We'll take a break and come back and catch the next one at about 3:00. Just as a, just as a general message to the public, we're trying to stick to this applicant interview schedule because of the fact it was published in the paper, and people are trying to listen to it at home. And therefore, if we race too far ahead, we're going to be, people are going to miss the opportunity to hear the candidates. So we are going to try to follow the timetable as closely as possible. So our next interview is at 5:30 with Graham Butler. So we're taking a time break until then. It is 5:30, and we are back for more interviews. And at this time, we are prepared to interview Mr. Graham Butler.
Mr. Butler, nice to meet you. Michelle Edwards.
Mark Roberts.
Good to see you, sir.
Steve Blatty.
Hi, Amy Darby.
Amy Darby.
Nice to meet you.
Hi, Alice Lutz.
Help yourself. Very good. As far as introductory comments, the first thing I like to say is thank you for showing an interest in the city of Stanton. And we appreciate you applying for this. And as we appreciate all candidates who have applied for this. And each of us will be asking a question of you. Feel free to take, take as long as you wish. Help yourself.
Is it okay if I have the coke?
It certainly is. You'd be comfortable.
I'm the same way.
Thank you.
And if you do move the mic back up a little bit so that people is recording, so that...
Okay, but it's just that thing sticking right in my face.
All right.
Which, from the looks of it, I got to get used to it, so.
They're here. All right. So I will go first, and then everybody will take, take turns with asking you a question. And you know, three minutes apiece would be fine, you know. Feel free to expound as ever you'd like.
Oh, don't, don't ever say that to a lawyer.
Good point. All right. Tell us why you are interested in serving on city council.
Well, I'm at the point in my life where I can actually give back. I'm 55, okay? And I've been doing the legal stuff for a long time. I've done the military stuff for a long time. And so it's a time to move into a new chapter. I love the city. We moved here after law school. Neither one of us were from Stanton. But we fell in love with it. And for me, there are so many things going on with council and with Stanton and with Augusta County that I just felt that I had to be a part of it. Okay? I mean, the courthouse, the courthouse is done. Okay? The courthouse is done. It's a shame. It's a shame. Never did I ever think that that would happen. But we still have further issues to deal with. We have the West Side. We have Stan Crossing. I understand that schools are gonna try to put something out at Stan Crossing. That makes no sense to me. It doesn't. Okay. You're gonna put a a, uh, an entity that takes money in a position that makes money. I mean, why would you do that? I, I don't understand. And so that's why I threw my name in that. Okay. You know, I've, I've always talked about it for the last two or three years and my wife is like, throw your name in that. And I'm like, I don't want to do that. Right? And the time commitment and everything, but this, this is the right time. Okay. Stanton is an incredible city. And it will grow. It will grow. We may not like the way it grows, but it will grow. So to have a part in that and the growth and to decide where it goes is very important to me.
Thank you.
Can I do a follow up?
Yeah.
I'm just curious. You said you served in, uh, what branch of the military and how long have you been practicing law?
Uh, I was with the army. So when I went in, uh, it was like 2002, two or one. And shortly after I went in, uh, nine 11 happened. It was like, ah, ah shit, right? So, but I was with the, uh, special operations and I was good. I invaded Iraq. I fought in Baghdad. Uh, and I fought for a good number of months after that. So. And then when I got back, uh, actually in Baghdad, I applied for law school. Right? So, uh, I got into law school. So when I got back, I married my wife. I worked for a little while and then I got into law school. So.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. Thank you for your service.
That, that was a, that, that was a weird feeling to be in law school and to be five, six months off battlefield.
I bet.
It was, it was crazy.
Um, I've got the next question.
Sure.
What is a particular skill you possess that would be the most helpful as far as your service on city council?
Well, as you all know from my statements before, it's mediation. Okay. It's, uh, honestly, I do not know any of you. I, I don't. Okay. I, I don't, uh, haven't researched it, but people have told me that, uh, things are kind of split. Right? So all I do is try to like bring together split people together to make a compromise. That's what I do. Uh, I'm not saying it's gonna do with you, but that's all I've done for 15 years. So, uh, I, I know I'm, I'm not like telling you that I'm going to be the person that comes in and reunites everybody. But that is what I've done for 15 years.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Butler, how does your, um, work and work history and experience help us on city council?
Well, I mean, I, I just
Yeah.
Kind of explained it.
Anything else in your history, um, life history, work history?
You know what? I don't know. But I do know that I've been pressed into horrible circumstances. Okay. I'm not saying that's what you guys do. Okay. But I've kept my head and I've done honorable things. Okay. Maybe nasty things, but honorable things. Okay. That's the way it works. So I don't think that anything with the, uh, the council uh, will ever be more than that. Okay. You know, I've, I grew up elsewhere. I deployed elsewhere. So there's not much that any of you can tell me or you know, do something to me that hell, man. I mean, I've been shot up. I've been shot at. I've been shot down. There's really not more. Okay. Um, I really want to help Stan. Cause this is a place of peace.
Thank you.
Mr. Butler, uh, in, uh, in what ways are you involved in, in different aspects of Stanton life? Uh, you know, just volunteer or religious participation, government involvement, other things like that. Uh, and how would this kind of involvement inform how you lead as a member of council?
Yeah. Well, actually, um, I've been wanting to go to church. And I've been to Covenant. I've been to Trinity. You know, I spent three years on, in Vanity School. And, uh, I've not found my spot. However, I will keep looking. Okay. I think it's going to be Trinity probably because uh, the Trinity minister was at, uh, Rhodes College at the same time that I was. So we have a, he's, he's a great guy. The other thing is I just believe that I have, uh, because of where I've lived, because of where I've been. Because, you know, North Carolina, I, I, I actually, uh, you know, plucked down in Asheville. Even at that time, they were talking about Stan, Virginia. Right? 2007, they were talking about Stan, Virginia. You know why? Because even in 2007, they were talking about the Golden Crescent. Okay. Have y'all ever heard of the Golden Crescent? Anyone? That the Golden Crescent was from Charlotte to Asheville up the valley, through Roanoke, up the valley and it ended in DC. And this is in 2007. Okay. They speculated in the next 50 years that that Golden Crescent would be filled. Okay. What's happening now? People are coming in. They're buying properties. Right? They're buying this, they're buying that. And that Golden Crescent is starting to fill. Okay. I want to have something to do with how that applies. Okay. I do not like people who come into neighborhoods and buy a house and leave. Okay. Listen, the VRBO, the other stuff that's happening to our communities is, it's just, it, it hurts. Okay. I've got, I live on Woodland, right? Which is like the one way out, one way in. There are three VRBOs. They're they are alike. Okay. They do nothing for the neighborhood. Some people come in, they leave. Okay. And I can't even imagine the historical properties. Right? Right? So we have the northern, I, I don't want to get into north, south, whatever. But we have the money who's moving in to our area. And they're buying stuff and they're not, they're not doing anything with it. I mean, it's, go, go drive down, uh, go drive down, uh, damn, I can't, I can't remember. But there's a beautiful house. Beautiful house. Right? Trees are just falling over. Shrubs are falling over. You know why? Because the guy that owns it is in Boston. I mean, we, we have to, I, I don't know how we do it, but we have to deal with that.
Thank you. I think we need to keep moving so we can stay on schedule.
All right.
Five is me?
Yep.
Okay. Mr. Butler, um,
Yes, ma'am.
City council members can easily dedicate 15 to 25 hours a week to duties and meetings, which can occur during the day or night or evening. Are you able to make this commitment?
It's gonna be tough. It's gonna be tough. You know, I'm a lawyer and I'm all over the western part of, uh, the Commonwealth. It's gonna be tough, but I can do it. Okay. I mean, I, I can do it.
Thank you.
Yeah. And, um, you know, honestly, I mean, this, this term is until November. So that's one of the, one of the things that I want to deal with is can I do that? Can, you know, can I do that? So I think I can.
Mr. Butler?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, do you have any final thoughts about a goal or a priority that you think the city council should focus on?
Well, there's, there are so many, right? Right? Um, I think we need to expand our perimeters, right? Because you're not going to deal with growth if you don't expand your parameters. So, uh, you know, there's been so much made of, you know, off 81 and all that. The main thing that I would do would be to maybe initially for the first three to four years is to maybe, you know, lower taxes for businesses. Okay. Cause this place Stanton is an incredible place. This will be Asheville. This will be Charlottesville. Honestly, I don't necessarily want that. I don't like those places. You know, that's why I'm living here. But you gotta get people in. Okay. You got to get them to stay. Okay. That's why I am very upset about the courthouse. Okay. All right. I mean, y'all just I, I can't see it, but I will not bring it up at this time. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You appreciate.
Appreciate you, Tom.
Oh, is that it?
That's it.
Well, six, six of six questions.
Yeah, right on time.
Let's go.
Thank you, sir.
We thank you. Nice meeting you.
Yeah, nice to meet you.
And we're on break till six.
Yep.
Hey, everybody. We're back and it is now six o'clock and our next interview will be with Mr. Wilson Falver. Good evening and well. You can do that. You can.
Good evening.
Yeah.
This must be closer. So that's good, too.
Ms. Falver, we want to thank you for applying. That's the first thing we start this process out with a, uh, major appreciation of all the people in Stanton who have applied for the, for the positions. And, uh, you know, we, we start our nominating committee interviews with a heartfelt thank you. And we, we can, we cannot run this city by ourselves. So we, we definitely and so, um, there's six of us up here and we're all going to ask you one question and feel free to go two to three minutes. Three minutes is fine. Uh, expouse on your views and tell us what you think. And I will go first and I will say, we've read your application, but tell us why you are interested in serving on city council.
I'm interested, uh, well, first of all, good evening.
Good evening.
It's, it's a pleasure to be here. I'm very humbled and, and, um, filled with gratitude that, that you chose to see me this evening and hear what I have to say. I love Stanton, Virginia. Uh, I was born as, as I had on my application, I was born at King Stelters Hospital on North Augusta Street, which of course doesn't exist anymore. As, uh, were several of my siblings and, um, many of my friends. And I love Stanton, Virginia. I, I want to serve because I think that I can make a difference. I think that I bring, uh, some skills to the city, um, that are very important. Well, I think what's extremely important is working with people and understanding that people do have different views. And being accepting of that, uh, respectful of that. But I love the city of Stanton. I want to see Stanton grow. I wanted to see, I want to I wanted to see, I want to see Stanton be healthy as it is, but I think that there's also room for improvement, and I think we, we can always improve on certain aspects of what the city does, school budget. We go through the, the line items for the city budget, taking a very, very close look at that. But my love and passion for Stanton is the dominant factor of why I felt that I needed to fill out the application, and a very, very strong feeling that I want to work with city council and to make a difference.
Okay, Mr. Fauber, I'm up next. Up, what is a particular skill that you possess that would be the most helpful as far as your service on city council?
Um, I think, I think I bring a lot of different skills. Would bring a lot of different skills to the city council. One of them that I thought very much about is my knowledge of Stanton. Being, Stanton being my birthplace. I've lived in Stanton for fifty-eight of my years. I, my parents moved to the county a couple of different times. Actually, they moved from Stanton into Augusta County and back to Stanton in the same school year. That was a lot of fun. Thinking back on that, it was, it's difficult. But I, my wife and I built a home in Augusta County some years ago. We lived in the county for five years. Other than that, I've always lived in the city of Stanton. I, I love it. I think that the residents of Stanton are very resilient, that they have so much to offer, that they're hardworking people. I know the people as we walk down the street. I know people that we stop and we have conversations. I know the businesses. In Stanton, I understand their businesses, what they do for many of them, when they started in business, or their history of their business. I, I understand about the subdivisions, the streets. I have a lot of knowledge to bring to city council about how things work in our city. And I'm very anxious to put those skills to work for city council and for the betterment of our city and the citizens of Stanton. So it, I think the number one thing is, is bringing knowledge, the skills.
Thank you, Mr. Fauber. And how does your work experience and your history help us on city council?
Oh. As I noted on my application, started off in life in very, very humble beginnings. My, my father worked at Dozier Tire Company and then Central Tire Company, which used to be on Central Avenue, is now located at Verona and has a different name now. But at any rate, starting to work with people at a very, very early age, age ten, and learning about business skills and counting money, that was one of my responsibilities early on, and counting money back to customers, and it has, had to be turned the right way and so forth, but I, I learned a lot of skills early on. I didn't like it at the time. I didn't like working after school every day and working every Saturday and six days a week during school vacation in the summer. But it did do me a lot of good, as people often said, and I learned a lot of, about a lot of people in the city of Stanton and where they live, about their occupations. And I think the history of that helps me a lot because I understand so many of the people in Stanton. I've been hands-on with budgets. I, I, later years, started my own real estate company. And I've actually owned several real estate companies, and I'm still in the real estate business, so I still have to deal with budgets. I still have to deal with the expenditures and what, what I can and can't do. The same thing is true of all of us, for our households, and the same is true for the city. So, I think my retail business experience says a lot. And I'm very tendacious. I, I'd like to hang in there, see a project through. And again, my love for people. I love people, and I love working with people. And also, as the vice chair, excuse me, as the vice chair for the Economic Development Authority for the city of Stanton, I've gained very valuable experience. I'm very, very excited about Stanton Crossing and what is about to take place. For many, many, many years, we've heard that something is going to happen there. And now we are at the place where it is going to take place, and it's going to be very exciting for the city of Stanton. It's going to be very beneficial, beneficial for the city of Stanton. And I think that that experience that I have, that I can bring to city council, is going to be invaluable.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Mr. Fauber, in what other ways are you involved with different aspects of Stanton life? You'd mentioned the EDA as well, but things like volunteering or church things or government involvement. How would this involvement to help inform how you lead as someone on city council?
Thank you for that question. It's a very good question. I have been involved in the local churches, a number of local churches, and for over four decades. My wife and I taught a youth group at a church that we didn't attend, but they needed youth leaders, and so very young. We were very young in, in our marriage, and we had a passion then to help people, and we, we did that. Volunteering at the local church, I've served in the local churches from a deacon to be an elder assistant pastor, pastor, I pastor a very small congregation right now, because that's where I feel that I should be in my life. I, I worked with the America's Birthday Celebration years and years ago, when the Statler Brothers decided that they were going to call it quits, and well-deserved after their twenty-five years of serving the city so well. I was in a meeting and of a newly formed organization that was trying to keep the Fourth of July celebration going. And I found myself sitting at that meeting, and the chairman announced that they were going to disband, that Stanton would no longer have a Fourth of July celebration. And my friend that was with me, he worked at my office, and I looked at him, and he looked at me, and he said, "Don't do it." And I, I raised my hand, and I said, "I will do it." Because I couldn't bear the thought of our beautiful city not having a Fourth of July celebration. Our daughters grew up. We took them to the Fourth of July celebration every single year. They expected it. I knew the citizens of Stanton expected the Fourth of July celebration. It was such an important part of our community, and so I had to step up. It was challenging. We had a very small committee because we didn't have the support that they had when it was the Statler Brothers, but I kept it going. And I not only kept it going, but instead of having just the Vesper service on July the third and the celebration on the fourth, I turned it into a seven-day event. Wrapped it around the Stonewall Brigade Band, Jazz in the Park, and we filled in with other nights like that. We had Ice Cream Social for seniors to honor our seniors in our community because I wanted to give back to the community. And so these are things that I bring to city council, the experiences. Again, the love for people, working with people, and being able to work with people. Now, we all know that some people are easier to get along with than others, but still, I think we can find some common ground. And that's where, where I'm coming from, is that we can find some common ground.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, Mr. Fauber, city council members can easily dedicate fifteen to twenty-four, twenty-five hours a week to duties and meetings, which can occur during a day or evening. Are you able to make this commitment?
I can enthusiastically say yes. I am. I have thought, I thought long and hard about this. I talked to my wife about this, even though I don't need the permission of our daughters and family. I, I talked to them, and I got an overwhelming yes response that we, they all said, "We think that this is something that you should do, that you have so much that you can offer, that you can bring to city council and, and helping our city go forward." And so I, I'm enthusiastic about it. I'm not afraid of hard work. I'm very dedicated. I own my own business. I can set my hours. I've already been down the road where I've been the number one listing agent, number one selling agent. I don't have anything to prove to anyone. I'm heavily involved in development of certain projects that are in Augusta County for residential projects, and my clients understand about my schedule. They understand that I like to spend time with my grandchildren and my wife, and they're very, very flexible. So I have the flexibility. I can be here at nine o'clock in the morning or earlier, and I can be here late in the evening. So I absolutely can, and I'm looking forward to spending long hours working for the city.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Fauber, the last question is, do you have any final thoughts about a goal or priority that you think city council should focus on?
I do. I think that the city, from, from my understanding about where we are and where we are going and the goals of city council, I see that growth is coming. So the city of Stanton went through a growth period when American Safety Razor Company moved to Verona, and when the company then was called Westinghouse when they came to the area. It created a boon for Stanton and a need for housing, for need for businesses, support businesses of all different types, because they brought in jobs. We're now looking at a situation where we're faced with this, that, and it's a good, it's a good situation to have, that Stanton Crossing is going to happen. And Stanton Crossing is going to bring in a lot of jobs. A lot of jobs will necessitate housing. Most people that I know do not want more houses built in Stanton. So what Stanton is going to have to be faced, or it's going, excuse me, is going to be faced with the decision if we're going to allow housing, new housing, to take place in the city so that we can attract the businesses that want to locate in Stanton at Stanton Crossing. Right now, in the MLS system, in the city of Stanton, there are fifty-nine houses for sale, fifty-nine. From the lowest price to the highest price, that includes any townhouses, and the, and the city doesn't have a lot of townhouses. But this is something city council is going to have to focus on. What are we going to do to be able, after we have spent the millions and millions of dollars that we have spent, and I'm in agreement with that, are we going to tell these businesses it's up to Augusta County to create new subdivisions and allow the people to live in Augusta County and work in the city of Stanton? Or are we going to do something about that? We're landlocked. We have a real challenge, but there are areas, there are pockets that it's possible for this to take place. I'm concerned that some people, many people right now, cannot find housing, period. They cannot find apartments. They cannot find a townhouse. They cannot find a single-family house. That's not going to change anytime soon. This is where the real estate market is. It's where the economy is. It's not going to change. So Stanton is going to be faced with this. The question, I think the residents are going to get pretty vocal about this. Stanton, what are you going to do? Council, what are you going to do so that we can have housing in our city that we love so much? And I want the housing to be comfortable. I want it to be safe for the residents of our city. So this is something that I see that we are going to be faced with. It's something that we very much need to be concerned with. There are many, many, many other issues that we're going to have to look at, that I don't have time and my allotted time to, to address, but this is a very big one that is coming.
Yeah, I just have a follow-up.
Go ahead.
So in, in you addressing that, and I know this is a interim position right now that we're filling, are you looking to advance your seat?
I, I, I am already looking. Thank you for that question. I am already starting the process to begin a campaign. I don't want to serve just the rest of this year. I want to serve this year, and I will do that enthusiastically. I want to serve next year. So I understand that I will need to, if I am appointed to this position for, for this year, I understand that I have to start a campaign. If I want to be on council next year to run for that position, I'm prepared to do that. I've already started that process. I'm eager to get started with that. So in 2023, when the election comes around, it is my hope that I will be elected by the citizens of Stanton to serve on city council for the remaining term of Andrea Oak's term, and I'm fully prepared in 2024 to run for a full term for city council. This is something that I am dedicating myself to do. My family is very supportive, as I've already mentioned. I am enthusiastic about it. This is where I want to spend my time. This is what I want to do. I feel very comfortable in here. I feel very comfortable among this group. And I would like very much to be a part of it. I will be running.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Fauber. We appreciate the interview. Appreciate your time and your enthusiasm.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And we'll be on break until six-thirty, when we have our last interview. And we're back for our six-thirty interview. Tonight is with Mr. Adam Campbell. We are ready. Good evening. I trust you know everyone?
Uh, yes, just met the new members I hadn't met, just back there, so yes.
Very, very good. Well, let's start this out like I start all these interviews, and I say, "Thank you so much for applying." And on the nominating committee, we thank everyone. We, we always say that we cannot run the city of Stanton by ourselves, and we need all the help we can get. We appreciate you stepping up and looking forward to tonight's interview. We've read your application. We've selected five, and all six of us up here on the And all six of us up here on the dais will ask you a question. Take, take three minutes piece. And, you know, we got this basically scheduled for about twenty minutes. So feel free to expound as you want. And let me go first and and say, tell us why you are interested in serving on city council.
Well, first, Mayor Claffey, members of council, I just wanted to say thank you for this opportunity to talk with you all tonight. It's a very exciting opportunity for me. And I I just want to echo, it's very exciting to see how many applications were actually submitted. It's great to see just so much interest within our, the citizens of our great city to to serve in that capacity. So for your first question, the short answer is, I really just want to do my part to serve and help lead our great city into the future. My wife and I both grew up in Northern Virginia. We both went to Virginia Tech. We met at Virginia Tech. We moved back to Nova. We always thought, once we had children, we wanted to go get back to Blacksburg just to raise our family, a smaller town. An opportunity presented itself for a change of employment in Stanton. So we took it. We moved here, thinking we made it halfway back. Fell in love with the city. It's truly a remarkable city. I think the combination of just the unique historical character, the architectural character, even the topography of how it, how it sets the stage for the city, our great businesses and culture. I mean, we absolutely fell in love. Now we have a, we have a great group of friends. We're both very active in the community and we can't see ourselves living anywhere else. Our children are now, we have two boys. They're eight and twelve. They're both in public schools. McSwain and our oldest just started his first year at at a Shelburne. So we're invested in the community, invested in in the school system. So I've had the fortune throughout my my professional career of always being involved in in local governments. When we were in Northern Virginia, I was on the private side of things and land development. So I would present to to planning commissions, board of county supervisors, town councils, city councils. So I've always been around it, but it wasn't until we got to Stanton that I really became interested in serving in the public sector. Well, first off, coming to Stanton, I got a job with VDOT, so I'm in the public realm. I've been in the public, public side of things from a different perspective for the past eight and a half years since moving here. But also, I think just the smaller town feel, it gives it more of a personal scale. You know, people get so caught up in in national politics, but it's really the the small town where you can make the biggest difference in people's lives. So I've, 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 I've been fortunate to serve on the planning commission for the past, I'm only six year now, second term. So just that, along with continuing to work with local governments, I really see a pride and a personal, a personal satisfaction, a sense of accomplishment, just serving in this capacity. And yeah, I would look, greatly look forward to to serving in this position on city council.
Thank you.
All right, Adam, I'm up next. What is a particular skill that you possess that would be the most helpful as far as your service on city council?
So I would have to say problem solving and critical thinking. I've only held two positions in my professional career in land development. I focused on feasibility studies. A developer would bring me a piece of property and say, what can I do with this land? And I was responsible for for looking at the constraints and the opportunities and coming up with the best solution for that, for that individual. Now that I'm on the public side of things with VDOT, we all know that that transportation funding is is limited in this day and age. I get the, I get the privilege to work with with localities up and down the Shandover Valley to help identify their transportation needs and work within the constraints of available funding to come up with affordable solutions that address those needs that are going to be competitive to to go after that funding. So I would say, yeah, problem solving, critical thinking, but also collaboration. That's especially true with my current, current job. I'm often the project manager for various transportation studies where we have a wide variety of members on the study team from local representatives to the various sections in VDOT, bridge design, traffic engineering, location and design. So our, our study team members can somewhere, sometimes be up to twenty members. So just bringing those all together, having the ability to lead and collaborate with that group of individuals, I think it's a strong suit of mine.
Thank you, sir.
Adam, this might sound a little redundant, but how does your work experience and your history help us on city council?
So I think this is where I really stand out. I've already mentioned that I've, I've had the the privilege of seeing both the perspective of the private side of things and and now in the public sector. For the last eight years, I mean, it's been a daily, daily interaction with local governments, all the way down from the staff level to elected officials, to interactions with with members of the public on various, various issues. I have a great understanding of how local governments work. I know that the city is in the middle of developing their FY twenty four budget. I have an experience with a wide range of budgets, from being project managers for studies where you're looking at budgets of, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars to doing my part in my professional career to help manage program and deliver a multimillion dollar construction program with with the Virginia Department of Transportation. I also like to point out with my professional experience, I'm very familiar with a lot of city staff already, from Ms. Beauregard to Mr. Mr. Johnson with Public Works, Mr. Bond with Community Development, Mr. Blair with City's Attorney's Office. I think, I feel like I would be able to step right in with 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 minimal learning curve in this position and help lead the city.
Thank you, Adam.
I was Campbell. In what ways are you involved in different aspects of Stanton life beyond your work experience on that? Like things like volunteering, maybe with churches or government involvement, things like that? And how would this involvement inform how you lead as a member of council?
So I, my wife and I, my family, our family is a member of Covenant Presbyterian Church. We actually, when we moved to Stanton, we rented a house for a year, just so we could get a feel of where we wanted to end up in the city. That first year, we we attended and joined Covenant. We were fortunate to end up, how the house right across the street became available from the church, so we ended up moving there. I don't know if that was a good decision because I got roped into the the church facilities team right off the bat. And now I'm responsible for going us, going across the street and clearing the sidewalks of snow. Fortunately, it's been a pretty mild winter, so it hasn't been too bad this year. But in addition to to serving with the facilities team with our church, being active members of the church, a big part of my life is just serving the Boy Scouts of America. That was a big part of my upbringing. I'm an Eagle Scout. That really shaped who I am as an adult. And so when my kids came of age, it was great to get back into that organization. I've been serving as as Cub Master for PAC thirty that meets at St. Paul's United Methodist Church on the west side of town. I've been doing that role. This is my fifth year. It's quite a commitment, but it's, it's a rewarding commitment to get in, back into that organization. There's so many great values that we don't really focus on in school anymore in terms of, of, I feel, leadership, civic responsibility. Just, and then obviously camping, wilderness survival, those type of skills and everything. But yeah, I'm very passionate with that organization.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Campbell, I'm sorry. Just had a blank moment there for a second. I'm like, what is his name?
I'm, I'm terrible at names.
Because I'm just concentrating so hard here. So city council members can easily dedicate fifteen to twenty five hours a week to duties and meetings which can occur during the day or evening. Are you able to make this commitment?
So to be honest with you, I have, I've, I've thought about running for council in the past. And that was one of the reasons, just, you know, with young kids and all the various activities comes along with young kids. That was one of the deciding factors of why I haven't run before. However, now, yeah, I think, I think I'm at a point in my life where I can definitely handle the commitment. My wife and I have bragged so much about how great our city is. It's resulted in my in-laws, my parents and my brother and his wife all moving to the city here in the past three years. So I have quite the support team. So if I need someone to cover responsibilities, I have plenty of people to call on. So, yeah, I'm not concerned. I also, working with VDOT, it's a great work-life balance. They have, they offer flexible work schedules. So, yeah, I'm, I'm confident that I can meet the commitments of this position.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Campbell, the last question is, do you have any final thoughts about a goal or priority that you think city council should focus on?
Yeah, so I, I'm a big believer in the benefits of improvements to the public space and public infrastructure. There's the saying, public investment begets private investment. I think that's a great statement. Communities that invest in themselves are attractive and desirable to businesses, not only businesses, but just people moving, new people moving into the city. I also think investments in the public realm also translates to the broader community in terms of increasing community pride and an increased desire in the citizens for for personal investment in their own properties. I think the city's done a great job in this realm. I'd like to commend council on, you know, the recent actions to 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 invest money into studying, doing comprehensive studies of the West End and Union Town. These are both parts of the city that that need a holistic look at at how they can be improved, understanding the constraints and opportunities. So I think that's a great path forward. But I think there's still lots of opportunities that we don't take advantage of. There are so many grants available out there today that we can utilize to to stretch, you know, our limited city budget to to really do more for the city. I know in last year's budget, there was a new position created in the community development section for a grants coordinator. I think that's great. I think the focus of that position is on a community development block grants. But maybe that's something that can involve over time to to start looking at additional, additional grant opportunities to to help the city. Also, real quick, from an economic development side of things, I think Stanton Crossing, based on the investments to date, we need to continue to foster that opportunity to to realize its maximum potential. But also, just, I'd like to see more of of investment on our existing businesses. What really makes us unique? I don't know if this is already occurring, but I very much would be interested in a, in a business visitation program where, you know, council actively reaches out to the various existing businesses to see where their needs are and what we can do to help improve, improve and meet their needs. Studies show that most, the majority of economic development within a locality comes from growth of existing businesses. So that's another thing where I would like to focus on.
That was a lot.
Anything else? Any closing comments?
Again, I just want to thank you for this opportunity. I know, I know some of the candidates might see this as just helping out to fill this gap until the next special election, which, which would be great. But I just want to let you know that I I'm in it for the long haul. This would not just be just for this interim position, but I would expect to to run again for for the special election in November and continue moving forward. And, yeah, looking forward to the opportunity and and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell, very much.
Appreciate very much your.
Yeah, thank you for your time.
And we are on break until seven fifteen, at which time we will have public comment. Good afternoon. There we go. Welcome back. And this is the public comment section. In a moment, I will open up the portion of our meeting dedicated to receiving public input on the candidates for the council vacancy. It is a time that council sets aside to hear from citizens and others about the prospective council appointee. We ask that you please give your name, your address, and then keep your remarks at two minutes or less. When you have reached the two minute limit, I will let you know that your time limit has expired. For our Zoom participants, please raise your hand now if you wish to speak about the council, council candidates for the vacancy. Please keep your comments to two minutes as well. Once everyone has, who wishes to speak has had an opportunity, I will then close this public input opportunity. If you wish to speak about the candidates for the council vacancy, please approach the podium. I will alternate between individual physically present and those that have their hands raised on the Zoom platform. And with that, the public comment section is open.
Thank you for the opportunity to weigh in on this very important decision. My name is Pamela Mason Wagner. I live on North Colter Street here in Stanton, Virginia. We're in a funny position because when we vote for a candidate, we're doing it in private. And now I'm about to declare who I want to vote for publicly. I consider myself friends, or at least friendly acquaintances with several of the candidates. And so I hope they won't be angry with me if I don't put their name forward, but rather I suggest someone who I have never laid eyes on before tonight. I believe Stanton needs someone future looking for this position. And I believe Stanton would be well served to pick someone willing to go the distance beyond the interim appointment. The final two candidates, I think, had that forward-looking vision and both did indicate that they would be willing and interested in running for office. However, I think I have to say that I'm in favor of Adam Campbell. I was very impressed with Mr. Farber, but when I heard Mr. Campbell, I thought, that's the one for me, because of three of his answers. He suggested that problem-solving, critical thinking and collaboration were important skills, and I must agree wholeheartedly. He talked about the scouts, and I love scouting and was a girl scout, so I have to say I'm biased. And finally, because he feels the city can do more with grants, and I agree. I moved here seven years ago and got involved with the Arcadia Project. And since then, that's a project to revitalize an historic theater. I've written three, five or six-figure grants that were submitted by the city on, on our behalf to the state. We've received all three, so I'm sort of living proof that there are grants out there. We just lack the personnel in the city to write those grants. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Kessler?
Yes, sir.
Issues?
Caller?
Yes, I didn't hear you. I didn't hear you ask me to speak. This is Jack Curialason. I'm at two forty one Thorn Rose Avenue in Stanton. Tonight, I want to thank all, all the members of city council for the hard work you've done in this process. Your, your six hardworking, intelligent people with one empty seat to fill. While I was impressed with several of the candidates, there's one candidate whom I don't know personally, but I have had the opportunity to see in action in city, in city meetings. That individual impressed me more than any other participant on city commissions and boards in the time that I've lived in Stanton. And I was very excited to see that he would announce for, for his candidacy to fulfill this appointment. Adam Campbell would be the luckiest draw you ever got. I think it would be almost criminal to bypass this opportunity to add his youth, experience and forward-thinking to this council. And I certainly hope that you recognize the good luck that you had in having him present himself as a candidate and that you will appoint him to the council. And I thank all the other members for their applications. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next.
Hello, my name is Jordan Zipser, and I live on College Circle, and my pronouns are they down. Thank you. I appreciate that city council has decided to hold the public interviews for this position. I think that's awesome. As a member of the local LGBTQ+ community, I got to be perfectly frank, I'm not interested in bringing back people who want to ride the coattails of their previously-held council seats, or quite frankly, people who lawyers who want to pontificate stream of consciousness at us. That was not helpful, in my opinion. We do need new approaches. We need challenges to the status quo. We need some long- and short-term planning options, especially around budget and infrastructure, and to reflect the grants and everything are awesome. We really need to get into that more. And council really needs to start considering how the budget decisions and policies impact the marginalized and low-income communities in this area. So with that said, I support the consideration of both Adam Campbell and Ken Venable for the appointment to city council.
Thank you. Mr. Kessler.
Yes, sir.
This is Brenda Mead. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can.
Three, four, two, sure, with Avenue Stanton. I'm also going to support Adam Campbell. I think he brings a broader perspective to Stanton because he came here from Northern Virginia, and he understands he understands truly what a gem Stanton is. I thought he connected his education, skills, and work experience directly to the benefits they would provide for Stanton. I enjoyed the fact that he sold his parents and brother on moving to Stanton. So he's working directly to increase our population. His family is deeply involved in the community. He has kids in our schools. As a former, a previous speaker said, skills like critical thinking, problem-solving, and creating solutions within constraints are very important skills for someone to sit on city council. He had has experience with both private and public sites and has contacts with local officials and staff connections in the city of Stanton. He, one of his quotes was the under, he understands that, quote, "public investment begets private investment." I appreciated that very much. He made the practical suggestion that city council should conduct outreach to local businesses, because eighty percent of growth comes from small businesses, and certainly eighty percent of employment comes from small business. The focus on grants and his support of the small-area plans for Uniontown and the West End, and most important to me was his commitment to run in 2023 and 2024. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Lisa Hatter. I live at seventeen eighty-two Shutterly Mill Road. And I want to say it was wonderful to have twenty residents apply for this vacancy and for their willingness to serve. And congratulations to the five candidates who got interviews. That was really great. Each candidate does bring valuable skills and experiences. There were a few that I had a few concerns of conflict of interest. And so I want you to be aware of that. I would like to show my support for Wilson Faber, and and there are a few reasons why. So there was a recent gathering where we had mutual friends, and so I was able to have a fairly long conversation with Wilson. He has many years of business experiences. We spoke about his time on the Economic Development Association. He has some really great ideas for Stanton Crossing. He has vision more than just the immediate future, but longer-term into the future. He has good logic and reasoning, and he's results-oriented, and that's shown by his incredible business success. He knows many residents, and he has a pulse on our city. So he really does understand how a lot of people feel from various areas of and and points from the city. I've also found him to be a very kind, patient man who has a heart for service. He wants Stanton to be prosperous well into the future. And so I I am very confident that city council will make a very wise decision. And I look forward to hearing who to choose. And thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kessler.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Hi, good evening. Thank you. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. First off, I just want to say, my name is Tracy Wild, and my husband and I moved to Stanton just a few months ago. So still trying to get the lay of the land. But I, we came from Chicago, and so it's really exciting to me to have this level of openness and transparency in this process, and that we were able to not only read all of the questions and resumes of the candidates, but hear from these five tonight. So I really appreciate that. I I won't say too much because I think other folks have covered. But I was also impressed with Adam Campbell, and I would just like to say that I would be in favor of his appointment to the city council. So thank you very much. Oh, I'm on Middlebrook Avenue. So sorry about the address. But thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Roseanne Barrotsman. I live at seventeen forty-three Inglewood Drive. I'm relatively new to Stanton. I've only been here since February of 2017. I actually only know personally, and that not very well, one of the candidates, and I did not, I was busy otherwise, and did not listen to the interviews. Sorry about that. I'll catch you on the YouTube channel. But I did want to speak just in general terms about what I think we're looking for in terms of our seventh council member. First of all, I want someone who's principled, honest, respectful of others, rational, objective, and able to look at both sides of every issue in a nonpartisan way. What I do not want is someone who is such an activist about a single cause or a small group of causes that that colors every decision that that person makes. I want someone who understands the city, cares about the city, the residents, the businesses, the schoolchildren, and and all of those other elements that are so important to us. I want somebody who's able to make decisions for the good of all or most of the residents and businesses at any given time. Having said all of that, I want to thank all of you, the current council, for the new tone and good humor in your approach. I think it is very refreshing and and very uplifting to those of us who sometimes sit in on the council meetings. I know your work is hard. So adding a little humor never goes too far wrong. As a final thought, I know an oncologist who describes his job as saving lives, one hemorrhoid at a time. I'd like to say that you all make Stanton better, one decision at a time, and I want to thank you all for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kessler.
No, sir.
That went online. Anyone else from the audience care to make a comment?
Good evening, city council members. I'm Sheila Amati. I live on College Circle in Stanton. I took a lot of notes and gave them to the news leaders. So I'm a bit fuzzy in some things. But I would say that I do feel that Ken Venable has done a lot for the city, being on the school board, carrying it through the COVID, COVID crisis, working to get the members on the school board a page, just like city council members, you know, have received. He's done a lot of collaborating to with the school board to move it forward with the with the new Stanton High School. And I know I know I'm leaving out some other things as well. But I feel that he has shown that, you know, shown his leadership, his dedication to the community. Coming back here, many times people come back and they just want to sit and not serve. But he's served and served and served. So I think he's a great candidate. And I also highly recommend Adam Campbell. I had him in the review for double cent to you over the weekend. I think he's had so many great skills, the critical thinking that he's done, that he's outlined in presenting himself, his work in the community with Boy Scouts and working at Covenant, and just being involved in so many things in a way that expresses his planning and collaboration and working on the planning. And I believe the Planning and Development Council. So I think that we have two great candidates, and I think from them, you will be well-served by either one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Kessler.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, speaker.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Lee. I live up here on Rockaway Street in Stanton, Virginia. And my vote certainly goes to Ken Venable, who has shown us what leadership means, and especially in a black man who 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 left home and came back to serve his community. I think he deserves a chance on city council, even if he serves just for the until November. But my vote is behind Ken Venable. He's done a wonderful job on school board. He took a lot of heat. And when you can take heat from Stanton, you've done a good job. I think Ken has done has shown us what leadership in Stanton needs to take a lessons from. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Douglas Payton. I lived for thirty years on Spauling Street, and I live in the Hilltop now. And I've been a Whittler for a little over a year, and that's been a big adjustment. But I'm torn. I think Terry would be good short-term solution. He didn't get as involved in the trash talking as some of the other council members did. And I respect him for that. And our views don't always agree, but in the long term, I think Mr. Venable would be a good choice for the future. I told him the last election, I was surprised that he hasn't decided to run. So I'm glad to see that he's doing it now. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Kessler.
No, sir. I have no one with their hands raised.
And no one else from the audience? Well, with that, I'd say the public comment is adjourned. And I thank everyone for their input. And I appreciate everybody watching this. And it's been an interesting month so far. So we're going to retreat to a closed environment.
Mr. Mayor? Oh, do you like to read it, Alex?
Whoever has it go.
I move to enter a closed meeting for the discussion and consideration of prospective candidates for appointment to fill a vacancy on the Stanton City Council pursuant to Virginia Code Section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A one.
Motion has been made. Do I have a second?
I second.
Counselor Wood's second. Mr. Kessler, please call.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Arrowood.
Aye.
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We are now in closed session for how for who knows how long. We're there? We are.
Mr. Mayor, I move that council reconvene in an open meeting and certify, to the best of each member's knowledge, that only lawfully exempted public business matters were discussed, and that only public business matters as identified in the closed-meeting motion were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting.
A motion has been made. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, I second.
Thank you, Counselor Wood. Mr. Kessler.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Arrowood.
Aye.
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I will now entertain a motion. Well, you can get it from there.
Mayor Claffey, I would like to make a motion that therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Stanton that Robert Terry Holmes is appointed to serve on the Stanton City Council until the individual receiving the most votes in the November seventh, twenty twenty-three special election qualifies to serve on the Stanton City Council.
A motion has been made. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made in second. Mr. Kessler, please call the roll.
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Arrowood.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Is Mr. Holmes present?
No. Thank everybody.
Well, I want to thank absolutely everybody for all their input. It has been a wonderful month's event. Thank the staff for all the work that they have done. Thank all the council members for all the efforts they have put in. And we're very pleased to have Mr. Holmes back in his far seat, right where he's supposed to. I encourage everyone that applied to please run for the next election in November. Meeting adjourned.